Good to go.
Yeah. We're good.
Everybody's in?
Everybody's in.
Okay, here we go. North Smithville Town Council, August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam Clerk, we leave us in a prayer and pledge, please. I have one request, though. I would like to make a special, take an extra couple of moments of silence for Mr. Jerome Fersey, who passed away on August eighth, and Mrs. Henrietta Delage, who passed away on August seventh. Both people were well-known members of the community.
Lord, assist with thy holy spirit at council all those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibility.
Amen. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
The United States, America, into a republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice.
Pro quo, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Here.
Mr. Buregard?
Here. Open forum, pursuant to round journal of forty-two dash forty-six dash six. Is there anybody out there that would like to be heard in open forums? Anybody have any handles, CJ?
Uh, no, sir.
Is there anybody out there on Zoom that would like to be heard for open forum? Okay, moving on. We're gonna make a minor change, an agenda change. We're gonna move item J, new business, to the top of the, the top of the agenda. Especially my counsel for other actions. I purchased two pre-owned twenty-twenty police administrative vehicles. One second there. Mr. Hayes was in here, but did you want to get him to just say a couple of, a couple of words about what we got?
Yes, sir. I'm like the same, I've been in charge of the fleet and moving into the police department. Over the past several months, me and Chief Camarca, we have been looking at options for administrative vehicles. In order to help save the council money, I gave it to our colleagues who purchased pre-owned Ford Fusions. Ford has discontinued this model, so therefore they do not make the new Ford Fusions. So based on looking at different brands and different options of vehicles, it looked like it was gonna be approximately between six to fifteen thousand dollars a month. We did purchase a brand new vehicle as far as the model. So some of the search criteria that looked the ball was our pre-owned vehicle was a one-to-two-year-old vehicle with low miles, approximately under twenty thousand, with clean car facts, and a low twenty thousand dollar price range, which was in comparison to the price that would be for two brand new Ford Fusions back in the fall market share.
And it looks like you, the ones that you chose were Salem Ford and Tasker Ford?
Correct, sir.
Okay. And the reason you didn't go with the other one was because the lowest one is because of issues with that vehicle, correct?
Correct. My first, when I went inside with the vehicle, it was a seamless watch and it was the cheapest phone that I did get. Initially, they told me I had a clean car fax, and then I told them a couple of days afterwards that it was actually bought by accident, and they disclosed that initially.
Okay. Okay. And you come from this purchase?
Correct.
Okay, do we have a motion? Then I would take this in two separate motions. First motion would be approve the, the two thousand twenty Ford Fusion from Salem Ford to the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars.
I have that question.
Yep.
So what is the total price after it's all, everything has to go through? Is that what these are on the very end? Because it has to have other things put into it, doesn't it?
Correct. So there can be some, some of the vehicles that are pushing out, like shipping some of the lights, as far as adding into the vehicles. Number, where basically, I have to buy some parts or something, because I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's not. I do have a pool. If we have to buy everything brand-new, it would be like one pool for three thousand dollars, roughly two thousand dollars for each two. And then another one for versatile technologies, which would be four thousand dollars. And again, as, as we have to buy everything brand-new, we'll be shipping some of the two administrative vehicles out.
So wouldn't it be a good idea to go to, was it MHQ, is that what you said?
Correct.
Would, should we go there and see if we can transfer this, put into the, these vehicles and think about purchasing before we move into that?
We can, yes. I do know that the lights that are in these vehicles now were purchased within the last two years. There should be no issue with that. There are some fatalities as far as, and just turning the light switch on, the way that is in the vehicles now, that may not be able to fit into a Ford Fusion. Those two Ford Fusions that are purchased early this year, they do have a different, their control head, which has a blind side. A price for that is approximately two hundred and fifty dollars. So we'd have to buy something like that all the time, yes.
I mean, is this like a rush that you need to get these two cars going? Because if it's not, I mean, I'm only one of five, but I would just have the whole thing in front of me, knowing what our options are before we go ahead.
I know Salem Ford is my home vehicle. They were kind of, they actually bought one, so it's probably a couple of weeks, like, you can actually go to the agent and pick up the vehicle, and they haven't done that. As before, they were more cooperative, but I also told the same thing, I had a different lease, and they were, they were all available for that.
Well, you know, you have, you know what, approximately the worst-case scenario for the light package, or the police package, put in these vehicles?
Correct.
So what is the worst-case scenario?
The worst-case scenario would be, between the two bits that I got, one was four thousand six hundred and sixty-six, and the other was just over three thousand dollars. So worst-case scenario, we'll be at three thousand dollars for each vehicle, if we had to buy, and everything, for worst-case scenario.
So you had mentioned that, that by going around the used vehicles, you know, you're looking at cutting costs, what would be the cost for two vehicles similar in nature, but new? What would be, what would be saving by doing this?
So we can't get, so a lot of these companies are kind of moving away from sedans, and a lot of these companies coming out with SUVs. So I looked at other options, I looked at Toyota Kermes, Toyota Alans, the high ones, because that's what MHQ leaves a lot of in the shared vehicles. The price of one just a little, just a vehicle alone, was about five to six thousand dollars more for a Camry Alon. A Highlander was roughly about ten to fifteen for power lights, anything like yours, brand new.
Oh, brand new?
Brand new. The Toyota Fusions were a while ago, but they're pre-owned, because we did explore the brand-new options, it was gonna be roughly around forty thousand dollars, which I did get quotes for, a Dodge Charger, a Dodge Rango, and a Ford Explorer, because those were the options that were given, stand out twenty-five grand. And I did, I just sold them, I sent them to my, sorry.
Mr. President, you're talking fifteen thousand dollars more for a car, but when buying a car, it's supposed to be like a used vehicle with little wires on it?
So I can say right now, one pool that I got was forty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars for a brand new Ford Explorer. Island Tech Solutions, and then another pool were also Ford Explorer, which was thirty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
And does that include all the upgrades, or just the car itself?
That is, that includes the entire vehicle. The car itself is thirty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Correct.
And the Dodge R, which was for the Dodge Rango and the Dodge Charger, they have, with those options, where you can see able to secure one, this Dodge, just continued what they have in the share every twenty-two month vehicles. The pool just for that was thirty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, just the vehicle itself, and it was forty-two thousand seventy-seven dollars with every one.
Do we know how long it takes to do all the switching of these vehicles with the, the lights and everything?
So I do have, we can use versatile technologies to help sell a lot when it comes to that, some issue about the package, or like I need to switch radio to before, transfer voice, so one car to another. It's just a matter of, we can have, or something, back order. It's just, we actually face a lot of problems with it in the car. We just don't know what would be transferred.
You don't have many questions? Just, just based on the detective investigation into all this, number one is, those used cars aren't considered, right? Everyone knows right now the used car market is just going crazy.
Yes.
Because you can't get new cars. And in this case, sedans are gone, unless you buy Toyota Hyundai, or, or those vehicles. And based on that, it's at forty-three thousand. So if we want to buy a new vehicle, we can get one new vehicle. But if you want to get slightly used vehicles that are in good condition, you can get two vehicles. We can have the lights changed over. Even if it's three thousand dollars, and you do a whole thing, it's six thousand for the two cars. It's fifty-eight thousand dollars in an account, which is what is there for. That's a restricted account that goes from detail money into that account. So the money is there to do this, to get the two cars, as opposed to just getting one car.
I understand that point, but the point is, is, you know, this has been going on since we got the quotes on August sixth and August fourth, and brought it to the finance director on August tenth. So I'm just thinking, why didn't we go and find out whether or not we could get, like, everything that's compatible, and we come here and know that this is exactly what it's gonna cost? That's, that's what we're voting on. Instead of voting on something that, this is the base price, but we could spend another four to six thousand dollars to, to get it retrofitted to the way we need it. I just think we should have, and, because I'm only one of five, I just think we should, we should have the whole, the whole price, and know what can be compatible, what's not.
So John, could we, could we do two motions, one for the purchase of vehicles, and then another motion, once we get the quote, to, to upgrade the vehicles to, I guess, spec?
Well, I, I think it.
From what I, I, what I, what I, my experience is, they're gonna stop pulling things out of the car, they're not gonna know.
He can't get a quote, because he's not gonna know everything, when he starts pulling stuff out of the car, until they bring everything that they can take out of one car. And then after, then they're gonna say, okay, well, okay, we got everything out of this car that we can, we still got the X, Y, Z, and now we need that, you know? So they're not really gonna know until you stop pulling things out of the car, right?
Correct. And I can say with the confidence, before a lot of stuff has been changed, or supporters of the federal law, police, they go away, the time they have to be dealt with what packages them, and a lot of the stuff that, based on my experience of doing with the fleet, a lot of stuff has all been changed. It's just, when I say, like, when it's a choke that are turning all the time, right now, I'm moving over the crews that's out there, the box is like this. The new administrative vehicles we have, the box is like that. So that is something that I can say that I, I didn't make that work, but to make it work, they can't. Would have to make purchases like that, as far as the lights, actually, those, those will be coming out of the vehicles that we have now, swapping.
So my point is, is like, if we would have had them have a look at the cars we have now, and you know what the cars are we gonna purchase, could they just, could they have told you, yes, this, this is something that, that's workable? Or we have to order new lights, or, that's all I'm saying, is that?
I think they could have lost the G B M, yeah. I don't think it's a, and so I don't think they would actually just care to see it, have the Ford Fusion in front of them, and they stop shipping it out of this car, because we place it into that vehicle, so.
I just don't want to break this car and then find out down the road that now it's gonna cost us X amount of money, because everything we had is not compatible, and now we have to start spending more money.
Agreed. That's why I tried getting the quotes for the worst-case scenario, as opposed to saying, we can test, what on earth? That's why I had like everything, this is what the price would be if we had to. So try getting worst-case scenarios, posts those, saying they only need this one thing, and then they don't have to do any kind of things.
So if it is a worst-case scenario, how long would it take to order all the stuff and get all this, get it retrofitted to that, this car that I was building? I think that's what I'm trying to ask you. If we buy these cars in worst-case scenario, so now we have to order all new lights and everything else? What kind of turnaround are we talking?
Um, based on, we went to MHQ, they usually have a lot of stuff on stock, but they are a large company. So we might have all the assembly line, a couple of weeks, a big couple of months, they can't say. Versatile Technologies is a small company, I thought it should, that were a block, and these, a lot of our cars that pass with our administrative cars. These are the stuff for us before, it's coming in two weeks, so that, it's also installed on backorder, but the second, now it is kind of on backorder, so it's in places to order. But once the stuff is there, we just can bring it there, and we can very good with turning mobile data.
What are you currently using right now, that you're replacing?
So right now, we have a twenty-twelve Ford Forester, which was the chief's old car, it lasted nine years, and I would say that's the twenty-sixteen Ford Explorer, which was taken out of control, and that's what I personally. And both these vehicles, one has one hundred and ten thousand miles on it, but one's approached by a carrier.
If I may, waiting for this, as a recipient of one of the vehicles that turned out from the police department, and seeing much better days. But I'm not on the highway following public safety, but if I may, taking into consideration depreciation on a vehicle, we buy a vehicle, we put ten thousand miles on it, it's depreciated medicine. These vehicles, even including the impact of used cars and the installation prices. It's not a bad, not a bad way to go, but I do kind of agree with Council Al about the retrofitting of light cars and all the stuff on the vehicle. How much time is it going to take to account yourself? Council, if we went on board a Dodge Charger, how long would it take for it to get, because sometimes, as everybody's aware, some of the light kits aren't available, and it's a big delay to get new vehicles. So I think Council Al, let's bring up a great point about the light cars. I don't know, it's gonna be up to you guys to figure this out. But I, I think that Detective Donovan's done his homework. Putting you off, these vehicles won't be sold, and then where is that with the account for the vehicles?
If they all, if they all switch off some more Ford companies, over the past several, several months, including Ford, police Ford, Cape Car, Imperial Ford, Pony Ford, Salem Ford, Tasker Ford, Island Tech Solutions, and MH, MHQ, they are not able to buy brand new Ford Fusions, and as well as used Ford Fusions, and we found seven on the market. And the vehicles for the Ford.
Does anybody have, have anything else? Okay. Does anybody like, if you make a motion, I'll, I'll start it with one at a time, please, sir.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we go forward and purchase a twenty-twenty Ford Fusion S C from Salem Ford with nine thousand miles on it, the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Pro quo, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Buregard?
Yes.
Okay, the next vehicle? Is a twenty-twenty Ford Fusion S C with eleven thousand miles from Tasker Ford, for twenty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars. We have a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we go forward and purchase a twenty-twenty Ford Fusion S C with eleven thousand miles from Tasker Ford in Cranston, New York, on twenty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars.
We have a second?
Second.
Pro quo, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Buregard?
Yes.
Hey, really, split away, John. Do a good job. Thank you. Give it all your bags and pickets. This is my counsel. For other actions, hitting the bills. Anybody that would like that, does anybody that want to discuss, I'm bringing up at this time, but, on the bills? Okay, we have a motion approved.
Mr. President.
Ms. Alves?
I make a motion to refer the given bill stated eight sixteen thousand twenty-one, in the amount of two million eight hundred and eight, two million eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and twenty dollars, seventy-five cents.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Now, pro quo, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Buregard?
Yes.
Special, my counsel for other action on consent agenda already listed in this section, I consider it one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council's request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items that they would like removed from the consent agenda for discussion? I have one item. Bring your intention to the. The North Smithville Police Department, Interdepartmental Communication.
Mr. Vadne? I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, approve the following, Town Council minutes of July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, Animal Control want to report for July of twenty-twenty-one. The North Smithville Municipal Court want to report for July of twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you. That's a motion. Do we have a second, please?
I don't have.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Pro quo.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Buregard?
Yes.
I asked that the North Smithville Police Department, Interdepartmental Communication, be, be moved from the consent agenda, because we had a pretty interesting incident that happened with police recently, and I would just like to read it real quickly, and it's a good opportunity to maybe do so. On August third, two thousand twenty-one, members of the North Smithville Police Department executed a search warrant at ten River Road Street, a comment sixteen, one-six-four W, North Smithville. The search warrant was issued based upon joint investigation between North Smithville and Cumberland Police, to the cause of an individual residing at said address selling marijuana. In addition to the search warrant, detectives had an arrest warrant for Justin Maury, age twenty-five, of the above address. The arrest warrant for Maury was for possession with intent to deliver controlled substance. Upon executing the warrant, detectives located Maury at his apartment, and he was taken into custody. The detectives then conducted a search of Maury's apartment. Detectives located and seized two-point-one pounds of marijuana, thirty-six thousand dollars in cash, and seventy milliliters of marijuana oil. Folks, the reason why we have a safe community, and you can go outside and take a nice walk in your community up and down the street, is because of these guys right here. So I just want to bring this everybody's attention, that's all. So I would ask for motion to approve the final, the North Smithville Police Department press release, uh, from, Interdepartmental Communication.
So.
Thank you. Do we have a second, please? Pro quo.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Buregard?
Yes.
Okay, old business. And special, my counsel, on, of action on an update of municipal building, review task force, Mr. Najra, what was that? There he is.
Yes.
Mr. Najra?
If I may, I'll do the invoice first, and then I'll do the report. We have in front of you invoice number four-four-one-three-oh from Tecton, the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Again, this is a lump-sum contract, so if you look at the different tasks, you can see that they're pretty close to being complete. So on the July tenth task force meeting, we recommended approval of that invoice.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Najra? Regarding this invoice, any other questions? Okay, we have motion to approve invoice four-four-one-three-zero with Tecton Architects.
President, I make a motion to approve Tecton, um, text invoice number four-four-one-three-zero, updated by twenty-first thing, on fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars, for the recommendation.
That's a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Two seconds.
Two seconds, I'm sorry.
Mr. Vadne and Mr. O'Hara? Any discussion? Pro quo, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Buregard?
Yes.
Mr. Najra, do you want to give us an update?
Yes. So the task force met with Tecton July tenth. They, we went over our comments on the draft report, they're in the process of finalizing it. And at our meeting, we had talked about possibly making a presentation to the town council on that second meeting of September, which I think is September twentieth. But as I thought more about it, there is a lot of information to digest with the report, and I think the presentation will be fairly long. So perhaps we should have a joint work session, where we can have Tecton make the presentations, and the task force will be available. Help answer any questions. There's just a lot of data, a lot of graphs, a lot of pictures, a lot of renderings. And it would take up a fair amount of the town council, so I would offer that for your consideration. And quite honestly, I don't know what to do at this point, but if you decide to go that way, just, if I would know the date, we can contact Tecton and make sure they're available.
Are you ready for a presentation, or are you guys still?
They'll. At what loss, we looked at it, edited it out, and, and wanted things added, we wanted things deleted that, that were didn't feel necessary, and they're working on making the final presentation to us. I believe at the end of August, thirty, the thirty-first of August, and then we were planning to meet with council on the twentieth of September. We'll have to thank, but then, in conversation with Mr. Najra, so there is an awful lot, I mean, this is why I saw the, the draft report, one night I was playing it in the general's office. It's about this, there, two pages, full size of the paging.
Yeah.
Um, and there's, there's a lot of information in there, so probably, as you suppose, instead of a joint meeting between the task force and the council, special meeting would probably be the best, the best we could go with this time. Right, and it will fill up a lot of time, you know, in a regular day.
Yeah. Well, how about, when they're ready, just let us know, we'll set up.
Well, they were gonna be ready for September twentieth, so maybe it's better to pick some dates, and I can check back with them and see if both the task force and.
Yeah, there might be one issue, though, is, it's not gonna be us just being able to attend one of your meetings, because it's, it's so, it's so early in the, in the day, at five-thirty, I think there were questions, if there were some of the members, so we'd have to.
No, we could, we could change, we could change that. I think we could change the time later. What I would suggest is that, is that the clerk contact us to see our availability, probably a week before that, a week in between. If, unless you wanted, unless you can already decide it, we'll do it like on thirteen September, which is Monday, the week before, and then we can see if Tecton is available to come in. Their, their business. So we, we kind of work around their schedule right now, when they're available, they'll, they'll bring their meeting with them. It's pretty comprehensive for it.
Do you need a little time to? Decide to.
I'm gonna try to read. Paul?
Yes.
Why don't you, why don't you contact Jeff and Rebecca and see if they were available on thirteen, a week earlier, and we'll do it on a Monday night, probably like around quarter to seven, same time as the council meeting.
So Monday, six forty five. What's the, what date, the twenty seventh?
Thirteen, no, move it up a bit.
Okay.
Getting all those joined?
I'll do that. I'll do that immediately. Let's see how we respond. I'll let, I'll let you know.
Task force, so that, put that day aside.
Yep, okay, I can do that. That's all I have to report. I will.
Before you go, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, I will copy the town clerk on the correspondence, so she will know if it has to go or not, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Discussion, my counsel, what other action, an update of how well we do commit, Mr. Carver? So we met two weeks ago, it was actually the day after our town council meeting, that was pushed to Wednesday. We actually went over quite a bit, but before I get into what we're going over, I just want to remind the council that we really should start thinking about at least the first date to have Weston and Sampson come down and meet with us. Doesn't have to be immediate, but I would say if, I don't know, maybe we can get that on the agenda to discuss the next meeting, where we can look at the calendar and see what makes sense. Are they ready? Well, I wouldn't say within the next town council meeting, but I would say within the next month and a half, two months. You know, but obviously we want to make sure it's we want to make sure that it applies to just as well, so. I would say maybe sometime, if we discuss it, the next town council meeting, discuss the dates, or maybe it'll be even the late October, beginning of November. I think that might be sufficient. So just let us know when you're ready.
Yeah.
And then, you want to set up? Okay, okay.
That'd be easier, thank you.
So, last Hallowell meeting, we discussed with Weston and Sampson, they're going to propose three concepts to us. We pretty much, upon multiple lengthy discussions, that buildings one through four are not worth keeping. So that really left us with three concepts, one concept completely eliminating buildings one through four, seeing what that concept would look like with the Hallowell property. The second concept would be just keeping the cafeteria and potentially the admin building, but at least the cafeteria and everything else not worth keeping, so that's concept number two. Concept number one would be essentially eliminating everything, just dealing with that raw open space. So they're going to get back to us on that. They're also going to I'm sorry, we, we're also going to look at providing a scope of grant resources and putting together contacts and information that we should know. With with several resources out there, we feel like there's a good majority of grants that we might have access to based on the land, based on what we're looking to do. So we're going to put together a scope for that. We also discussed possibly going out for an R and B for services in regards to asthma testing for the removal of asbestos. So regardless whether we keep the buildings or not, there is asbestos in that, in those, so we are going to have to find a way to remediate that regardless. And then the last thing that we discussed was, we are, as a committee, individually taking on looking at and reaching out to various rec centers, community centers, and even some YMCA's, both of those that are private and those that have a public and private partnership. So we'll be working on that over the next month or so, reporting back within the committee, and then we'll share those results with the town council. That's all we have. Do you have any questions? If we, if we're going to put a YMCA or something similar, then we I don't want to minimize anybody's importance or anything like that, but if we've been decided that the town, we're going to put a YMCA in there, then why would we need Sampson and that company? We just decided, hey, we're going to put a YMCA down there, let's knock everything down, so we're going to put a YMCA. Well, I mean, in the little in the little research that I, that I found, there are public-private partnerships that YMCA's collaboratively work with municipalities on that. Sometimes it's mutually sharing the expense, sometimes it's enhancing, maybe the concept that we'd like to do, but not necessarily have necessarily, you know, funds to do it. And that would just be one area, right? So we could still use other aspects of the town that aren't necessarily controlled by YMCA, for example, that the town would have full ownership for. So, you know, I still see an need for Weston and Sampson, because, again, as you'll see, the first invoice that is able to be paid, which we'll get into the next item, is the, pretty much a land survey that they did. And it was pretty elaborate. We actually found a chunk of land that's just as big in size as the cleared space itself on the far right corner of the line. That could be accessible by the street that runs, thank you. So it's something like that, that I don't necessarily think that we would have been aware of had we not utilized our services. And again, that's just one example, so, you know, hopefully we'll see where it comes. Thank you.
What Weston and Sampson is going to respond to this stuff is give you a long-term, make it into a short-term solution, trying to using the land. It was a long-term solution, I meant the whole four year, insane. In the future, you may need a school, this building or that type of building, where you may want, and they're going to show you where you can put that on the site, and it will work, develop that whole site as a, as a municipal complex, so to speak, or some public-private enterprise going down there. They're going to give you that whole long-term plan as they go through this. Right now, they just, they just get started with this thing, doing, doing the site survey, looking at the condition of the buildings, which buildings in state, which to build. That's the beginning of the process. I think when they come and meet with us, they're going to update us and look for more direction on it. Now, how, where do you want us to go? And this is what we've got at this table, and where are we going from here?
Right, and I also think, you know, having been that a part of it now for a few months is, you know, what I'm quickly realizing is that Weston and Sampson, the agreement and the contract that we have with them, you know, this is going to be a reference point for years to come down the road. So what they provide us is, it's not really going to be a report that is going to be updated. It's always going to be a reference point that we're able to look back at and move forward. So in many ways, you could say, you know, yes, it was eighty seven thousand dollars to do this extensive contract, but if you really look at it long-term, it's a reference point that we're not going to have to hopefully pay for in the future to do a smaller part of what people are with. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions, Mr. Carver, regarding the Hallowell? Thank you. Okay, we have another, we just continue on on the subject. We have an invoice here, that's. Mr. Porter, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, we have an invoice of fourteen thousand dollars. You want to just give us a quick update on that?
Yep, so this is for services to date. Weston and Sampson provided a breakdown of the, their work scope, what percentage complete they have done thus far. So we had reviewed that at our last meeting, and we're recommending to the town council for full payment.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Porter? Okay. We have invoice number seven two one zero nine eight nine, fourteen thousand dollars for Weston and Sampson. Do we have motion approved?
Oh.
We have a second. And we have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badney?
Yes.
Mr. Girard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, let's see now, but especially my counsel, what other action on salaries and wage ordinance? This is the second reading.
Mr. President?
Mr. Badney?
Make a motion that we approve the ordinance down North Smithfield, chapter salary and wages, for second reading. To meet for fiscal year July first, twenty twenty one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty two.
Any discussion? I'd still like to point out that the administrator makes less money than some of the people that actually work for him. I don't know, I just think that maybe at some point in time, we could correct that, but.
I'd like to say something about that. We have to get more competitive, the cities and towns, at times we get really good people, and what they're being paid and I think with respect to the parents, they lose them. It's not a long haul, and they have families to support, so we can't blame them, and generally, we really get in good terms. We want people that have worked hard in their lifetime to be successful, even if.
I agree, it's just unusual, that's all.
Unusual, no, not North Smithfield, not unusual.
Well, this is not a reflection on the administrative.
No, no.
This is not unusual in a community where you elect the CEO. He's not always the highest paid. If we had an appointed CEO of the town, you would be paying more money. He would be the highest paid
Yeah.
person in the town. With an elected position, it's normally not, that's unusual to run in any community. The elected position is not, is not always the highest person. Usually, like in our case, the finance director is normally the highest person paid in town, because they're the most vital, and it's based on qualifications. Again, not a reflection on you, Paul, it's just, that's just the reality of it, that elected, elected leaders don't earn the same pay as.
Maybe that has to change, if they were elected in the conference to do something, or appointed, if they had to do something. We're in a country now, because too many years, we didn't keep anything up, and now it's coming back to bite us big time. So, you know, it's good to keep taxes down, but when things are falling apart around you. Before, Mr. Teddy, I'm saying right off, you know I, it might not say right off, but you have, going through the town bar and the cells, and even looking more professional, you don't have these Mickey Mouse teeth that are everywhere around. It looks I think when you dress to work and the certain decor, you follow a certain path, and I appreciate it. And I've seen it, we've seen it over the years. But don't blame it on a faulty position, maybe it's only a point, but when we get good people, if we do not pay them something about the same size of our community, something equitable, we're going to lose them. That's all I have to say. And I'm, I'm an idiot, I don't want to throw away money, but at the same time, if you have something good, you want to keep it too. That's all.
Mr. President? It's a bit of a problem, I've heard that, that enters into this water. Town administrator has the acceptance theory. It's the acceptance of the voters of the town, he or she. They come in knowing what the salary is. I'll tell you right now, it's really not fair remuneration, because they want to work that goes into it. However, if, when we make comparisons, start like communities related to managers, contractual obligations, buying them out, should they not do their job properly? It's anywhere, oh, geez, I get those emails every day, where they're looking for town managers in other towns, other cities. It's fifty, sixty thousand dollars more, and all I love North Smithville, I have no intention of moving, but I think there's a big disparity between the town manager and a, and a town administrator or town mayor, because the town manager truly don't even have to pass to answer to the majority of the city or town council. The not responsible, well, they are responsible individuals, but they don't have to answer to the constituents, the residents, they answer to the elected town council or city council. It's, it's a totally different animal, but I appreciate you acknowledging.
I'll be there until I get it.
You know, and if I had the opportunity where I could put twenty seven hours in a day, then maybe I'd get six hours of sleep. But it is very demanding, so if anybody's out there thinks that town administrator job is easy, it is not. It is very, very demanding. It's a seven day a week job, at least twelve, thirteen hours a day on that job. You may get a half hour break, where you get some time for family, but those that know me, and those that know previous administrators, will tell you exactly just what I said. I hang in, I, I love it. I know what I signed up for. But it's just the analogy of a comparison to a manager. It just doesn't make sense, because those individuals get a five-year contract, and, well, enough said. Thank you.
Okay, we have a, anything further to say, first of all? Okay, we have motion and second, I think, correct? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badney?
Yes.
Mr. Girard?
Yes. Special counsel, what other action on contract, STAND Act Engineering Consulting Services, Comstock one and.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I don't know, there's just a couple of people out there, I can't see the screen, Russ was supposed to be here to weigh in. So you know Russ is the superintendent of water and sewer, but I'll lead us into this. We had to dial in the last time about breaking this contract down, concerned about costs. As we all know, there's this rule of thumb that soft cost, engineering cost, are roughly ten percent of the project itself. I don't know that to be true. I, in some telling that, I have to believe it. I am thinking that, you know, if you've broken down, if you wish to go into the packet itself, you have contract one and contract two, contract one, rehabilitation, Comstock tank, demolition, Comstock half million gallon tank, demolition, Comstock, well, elevated tank. The engineering cost alone is two hundred fifty one thousand six hundred dollars. Now, above that, you'll see pre-design effort, industrial drive, memo, survey of two tank sites, assets, materials, investigation, design only fifty four thousand five hundred dollars. And I'm bouncing out of order here, and then you have contract, contract two, which is investor guide booster pump, so it's kind of all human, if you can see a building, a building. It's going to be up to council to make this decision, but we do have to move forward a little bit on this, to start the ball. Since it's two thousand seventeen, the Comstock tank itself has been we're not upon a health, sort of, with dresses, and is there any money? We don't have a bond, why don't we go up on, we're in a great position right now, with the the money coming in from the federal government, so ladies and gentlemen, it's up to you, questions, I'll do my best to answer them for you. Mr. Badney, he's well versed in this type of stuff. If I may, Mr. President, if I may, ask Mr. Badney his thoughts?
When we, when we met with, with Stan back last week or two weeks ago, we asked him to come back and look at it, because he'd given us four contracts, and they were saying it was a duplication of effort. And they said, they thought if we combined it, we could save significant amount of money. Just looking at it real quick, what they submitted this week, taking it into two contracts as opposed to four contracts, there's a savings of almost four hundred thousand dollars, which is what they were talking about. But I think going forward, it would be my recommendation is that we, we award the pre-design effort at fifty four thousand five hundred, and that's what Mr. McCarthy stated the other day, that we could do this, and we would work our way up into the thesis, that we would award the pre-design effort to get this started, so that it's going to give us a better idea of what those next pieces are going to be. We need, we need to figure out exactly what, you know, they can tell us, well, we're going to take down this tank, take down that, and without knowing, going through and doing all the detail and the engineering to it, we're really not going to know exactly. Without knowing, going through and doing all the detail and the engineering to it, we're really not gonna know exactly what it's gonna cost us for that. So either way, we gotta get it done. It's gonna give us a better idea, and I think they're gonna have a better handle on what the potential cost is, which will help us out making decisions on contract one and two going forward. Further, depending on what we have with ARPA, whether it's one point two or two point one or whatever. I know it's starting, it's starting to come in, and that's what we're targeting for, is, is to do this, this whole system upgrade. But I think that the first part is we need to, we need to award that pre-design effort. And, and Mr. McCarthy, they said we could do that, and we didn't have to award all of the others, but we did ask them to, to look at it and, and see if we can combine some of those, if there would be a cost savings, and like I say, just doing real quick, quick math in my head. It's about a four hundred thousand dollar savings, by not duplicating efforts as they go through this, with, with design and bidding and, you know, bid spec and all that stuff, so.
So we're just looking then at the one, uh, the, the one rule of fifty four thousand, five hundred dollars this time.
That's, that's my recommendation, uh, I shouldn't, I kind of defer to Council Vadne because he's had a lot of experiences, had most of us in this room. But I just wanted to deal with Council Vadne, and say, you know, except this memory that just doesn't fail, so.
It's good to hear when you, um, this is, this is something that's not going away. If something has been on the table for four years, we've been trying to get our arms around it, and the previous administrator was trying to get around it before, before I can even on the council, it was an issue. Um, it's, it's really a matter of funding, and whether we like it or not, that stimulus money that the government dumped, you know, the trillions of dollars, we're gonna get some of it. And, and it's gonna, it's gonna be our, it's gonna be our saver, I think, in this case, because I don't know where we can get the million and a half to do all of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's no, there's no speed, there's no rush to spend, it's actually just five years in order to take that money and spend it, because, uh, because of all this money in the system. Uh, these type of projects are plus a lot of the demand, it's gonna go up for the contract, so. We do have time, but, uh, just coming back to that pre-design effort, I think would be a great step to get that to happen.
Is money already?
Yes, over six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that can be used for soft cost engineering as well, so we're, we're cut.
Anybody have any more questions? Anybody have to make a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we award to Stan Tech. Did you pre-design effort for the industrial drive? Survey of two tank sites, hazardous material investigation, design only, in the amount of fifty four thousand, five hundred dollars, and authorize the administrator to sign.
It's motion, is there?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Vieragod?
Yes. It's pending, as I apologize, I should, I should book you up. Uh, you want to move your call, you good? Sorry about that. Okay. The special by council, what of the action on replacement of unsafe sidewalks on Union Square to Park Square. So, how are we good to discuss this?
Absolutely. Um, first of all, I've gone up and down my favorite one forty six A, throughout town. Over the years, I've seen, and I've lived in that area. Over the years, we started with sidewalks in North Smithfield, and as more and more pavement was done on one forty six A, the sidewalks got smaller and smaller. And as bushes over grew, also, they got thinner and thinner. And then when they, uh, they start plowing, it's full of pieces of tar, et cetera. But the thing that is happening, people are taking it upon themselves to plow out the old sidewalks, put down new asphalt. And now they have extended parking today. Uh, and if you know, uh, one forty six A, afterward you'll be far and wide, before that my grandmother's house. If you go up past the auto place, there are two houses here. In front of those two houses were sidewalks. Now they're parking lots. It's no parking according to law on that side, from where the auto party, party place was garage at one time. All the way to, uh, well, there are a lot of things we're able to stop and shop, but all the way until Stop and Shop. Um, I believe about six years ago, some, um, I think we gave notice in these shrubs that over the road were taken out on the corner of two hours. But as you come up out of that area, when the houses pop, and there is a swale comes up quite high. You, you really can't see that turn until you get to that shit. And if this is thirty five, let me tell you, that, that, if it's green, no one's going thirty five miles an hour. You can't see, you stop pulling out in the air.
Where are you now, Russ?
Okay, uh, you're talking with a big farm, so you come up in the auto park.
Yeah.
Okay, those first two houses, after that, second house on my side of the street in North Smithfield, there's a swale in a, um.
Treadspacy.
Treadspacy, that's very high. I'm surprised we didn't move some kids there, if we have any. Uh, so we, we have that, now these people in the winter plow and block the side, because they need room for their color. Right now, it's an empty nest basically, one right above, they can't pop across the street. And the one side area, but that's parking, it's dangerous. There's no setbacks, now we have no parking signs, and it's funny, it stopped in front of who else? I thought one side was all on the side. It's dangerous, um, there's no setbacks, now that they're enforcing North Smithfield and South, no, no parking on the highway. Because then, so they look over yellow line, it's parked on the sidewalk. Something has to be done. And we may not be able to have sidewalks all the way like they have, really from school street on, on both sides of the street. But if, if there's a setback, that's, that's bad. Smithfield Road, people got beautiful houses, and now are taking on with a setback. Books love them, if you look up the driveway, but I've seen a mother with a, in, in a carriage having to go on the road, can't get through the flower beds. Another person needs more parking space too, so they took up the, in Union Village, they took up the gravel, took down nice little gravel on the fence. They have company, they park there. It's against the water, it's dangerous. You count that road, we add death. It, it, it has to be safe. I'm talking, on my area, I, I fell on that side, walked and had a torn meniscus, another one, a box that has to be replaced. And I don't mean a car, I mean a body, so I, I really like to see that safe. Uh, it should be all sidewalk, so that, and I don't know what our law is, we, I'm, most people, my school always, we have a sidewalk, we shovel. Plow it, get rid of the snow. And I know the people on one forty six, the corner house and the next house were shoveling for the kids. Cause I'm just, for, you know, corner house, well, to get to their house, we lift off further up, even the street. No other way to put it. I don't know, because that one forty sixth is a town highway, is it irresponsible? Or is it ours?
You're talking, when you say one forty six, you're reading Smithfield Road.
That's right, one forty six A.
You're talking about Smithfield Road, um, from, from Green Hill Road up to, up to Mary Mac Street. I know the sidewalk you're talking about, I walk it every two weeks, it'll pick up my back.
Yeah.
I'm familiar with it, it's a terrible sidewalk.
It's terrible.
We know that, I usually walk on the way back, Mary Fields, uh, we just had that.
Well, you would know.
But the issue, the issue, the issue with it is, is it's a state road, and it's a state sidewalk, so we want to pursue that. My recommendation would be is contact Senator Pabino, Marv, and their recruits and Representative Newberry, and come here, ask, and see what they can do for us. If I have someone, so.
Good evening. Um, when I saw this on the agenda, it's, it's been, it's been this conversation for many, many years about sidewalks and state roads. Coincidentally, uh, doing my homework on this, there was a new, uh, law proposed, uh, the DOT to take over all sidewalks and state highways. Presently, every municipality owns the sidewalk. Yeah. Um, for any maintenance or installation or whatever, so I've got the laws, um. I would suggest that with some of the money that we have, um, for road reconstruction that we have, I'm gonna come up, I'll look while, get a car to continue this, but. Maybe that's stretch a roadway right now, we can have it looked at by engineers, um, put a plan together and see what the cost would be, and, and kind of go that way.
And how about the section where they just the sidewalk off?
Down by the, uh, first two houses?
Yes. I'll take you, I'll take you.
No, it's, I, I think, I think it all can be worked out, I think it's just, it's gonna have to be engineered, it's gonna have to be, uh, on the right way. Uh, any, any remedy to these sidewalks has to be approved by the department, the director of, by DOT, even though we control the maintenance part of it. Um, I would just suggest that maybe we still contact, uh, Representative Newberry, because it would be interesting to see why this didn't gain any traction in the last session. Um, I don't know if DOT is existing yet, or, I don't know the politics of that, but I wouldn't want it to start to go way out there, DOT will all of a sudden take over the maintenance of all the sidewalks, and, you know, we're out next month without us, so I'm not, I'm not trying to.
No, we, we, it's wrong, we can do it that way.
Is that new or?
Something that was proposed, it was asked.
It, it didn't, I don't know if it just failed the committee, or if it, they even got to the floor, but it's, uh, it was proposed in the last session, and there's nothing to that.
Something like, something like a streetlight deal for this.
Exactly.
State is responsible, streetlights.
Yeah. So, um, I can certainly have, you know, the conversation could start with our engineers to look at, you know, what it possibly could cost. And in the meantime, we can try, maybe we can see if, uh, Mr. Newberry can help us out, see if it's gonna pass in the next session, or it's not, and then we can, or at least have enough dollars moving forward. Uh, that's how we can correct, not just that section of sidewalks, there's other sidewalks that need to be constructed or ma- maintained. It's kind of falling through the cracks, because nobody's really known. It comes with money, it's expensive, so, I don't know, they're kind of answering questions, but.
Well, there's also.
There's also another issue of illegal parking, right?
I was waiting, if you're allowed.
Oh, go ahead.
So, what it would exacerbate the sickness, uh, sick situation over there. Uh, if, if you're heading from Summit for the intersection, right? Um, with the bar, used to be, we're from around where it, it used to be, you know? So, uh, the car park there, there is a resident or was a resident, like Parkway, who has mobility challenges and uses a motorized wheelchair. Many a night, I saw this individual in the street to go around the vehicles that are on a sidewalk. It's a hazard, I know, uh, Mrs. O'Hara has been championing this for years, I think it's past time, and now with, uh, with the, uh, Director of Public Works is coming forward and tolerance and stuff, I think, absolutely, I think it's, it's public safety, and if you also factor in the amount of families that may be traversing that to get to the tight block that's behind the police station, we really need to provide safety for people on the streets. I, I, I'm sure if Ride Out was aware of it, they, they would step up, they, you know, they're just like everybody else at this. But I, I appreciate Director of Fennec Gax coming to bring this information, trying to reach out to our state perhaps and see if we have something to happen. I, I think most importantly though, I, I hope the town recognizes how long Counciloral Arrow has been championing this to have. So I, I think that, uh, I'm not looking at your faces, I'm trying to read your face, and I think this council is in full support, this town administrator is. And I think we've got a hell of a public works director to help us champion this.
It happens in a lot of places though, that people are parking on sidewalks, I mean, it happens in, in my neighborhood. One, one of, one of the issues is, is like Mrs. O'Hara started saying, one is, as they build the road up, the curve gets shorter and shorter. In my neighborhood, they didn't even put curbs in, they got a variance and we were able to put a cape cod. They call it a cape cod burn.
Yeah.
And so now, the sidewalk becomes an extension of the road and they just park on it. So either if you want to walk in a sidewalk around the street, I know it's not a busy neighborhood, but, and, and that's one of the downfalls when we, we read that, that waiver to say, well, we don't have to put curbs in, because it's, there, there's no curbs anywhere else in the neighborhood, but it's not somewhere. And, and, you know, and so, it happens in a lot of places where there were sidewalks, it, there were a lot of people in town, I know it's been talked by the planning board about more walking trails and more walking paths in the town, so people can get from one village to another village, you want to. But if you put these sidewalks in, people park on them, it can take the purpose.
Yeah, the, the town, uh, had adopted Ride Out standards for roads, and you have a curb zone, they're supposed to, it's called six inches of reveal from road surface itself. And six inches in case, uh, in twenty, thirty years, they want to convert it up to, to inch layer, you still have four inches for drainage, but a delineation. But what's happened over in this section where Mrs. O'Hara is people, which was my neighborhood, it's been paved over, and, and it's no longer delineated by curb. So, uh, that's something we'll take, uh, if council's supportive, I think, as Mr. Fennec asks, help me take over this.
But the parking that being out. It says, in, in, on, no parking on North Smithfield side of the street. It doesn't say two houses on the other side. Or.
I, I think we can just refer that to the employees.
I'm saying this is like a police issue, we should do something, we should ask them.
I mean, I used to do that, you don't go, I don't do that anymore.
Well, we have no time, all, all way.
We do parking on sidewalks, and we should have patrols going up and down, and if they're parking outside. But if we're gonna look at sidewalks, then maybe we should start looking over the middle high school, because that's another area that's pretty dangerous. Um, there's no sidewalks, cars are going fifty, sixty miles an hour, we have kids walking, so if we're gonna look at sidewalks, I think we need to look there too, to see if we can have something down there. I mean, it, there's plenty of areas in town that could use sidewalks, I'm sure they are ready, but what to have, but I think the high school is, is extremely dangerous over there. I mean, cars go speeding by there, and the kids are walking, it's, it's dangerous, so.
Yeah, at least with the stuff from the schools of the track, right, right, maybe.
Well, you have kids that have to walk to school within the neighborhood, you know, down, breathe.
Oh, yeah.
It's coming on the right street, there's no.
But it's also, it's a patrol issue too, I think you need to have, have, you know.
Oh, we have traffic.
Give it some sidewalks, I appreciate that, I will also start the process. Okay, I know what, what you needed, um. Just want to, I, I, you want to, you want to go up?
Sure.
Okay. We'll move, uh, to eight. Especially comes what of the action on House Sam Company Incorporated, Behind the Mirror Soul Array. National Grid even, Zalit Road, Block Four, what's two seventy seven?
Mrs. Experis from National Grid and the administrator in working contract also. I just wanted to first say that Miss Experis from the National Grid was very helpful in getting us a placement between Moose Pond and the Susan Company. So we've dealt with her before, in a positive way. This pertains to the newly told me quotes going in, in an easement on two road at the entrance to House Sam. First, you now said that we did have an easement, we were new easement, and then they said that we didn't have an easement. So our conclusion is that we really need some more time to take a look at this, make sure that we have. A vision of easement, a description of easement, which we do not have at this time. We also would like to take some time to confer with Mr. Penegast because he should have been involved in this from the beginning. So what I'm asking of you is, um, if we can take some more time on this issue to do some more research. And Mr. President, I would like to request that the administrator approve the installation after we do our research.
Okay.
Uh, system plan, I'm not, not again, like discussed this, so I'm in concurrence. Just need a little bit more time for the standards of, actually, me, I'm kind of a boots-on-the-ground person, I have to stand there all this to take a look at this.
Yeah.
As the town, my previous town board, that's why I used to do it. Uh, we're, we're kind of in the transition of, of Mr. Kravitz has, uh, left for another minute or so. With the system plan, we'll take a little bit back.
Okay, so, uh, no action right now.
No, but, but if you could make a motion to, uh, grant the town administrator, uh, the authority to approve this easement. Once we get a look at it.
Okay.
This is, this is going on a piece of land, like that final piece of land where the wellhead is.
Yes.
The wellhead where I use it, and it's only to allow National Grid with telephone poles. So they can run power up as they transition from net metering of a house in solar.
Yeah, two existing poles are ready, need additional to with anchor, uh, guide wires, hope to make sure that it's secure.
And they'll be on, and they'll be on a non-poppy, that's.
Uh, so, uh, would it would like to make a motion to have the authorized, the, and then kind of approve?
So.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badne?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes. If we, if we want to, is it, uh, is anybody here to discuss that? Discussion my council, uh, action, uh, Heritage Association, reservation, reclass, I think you both. Oh, Richard, did you, uh, Mr. King, did you want to discuss this real quick?
Um, yes, um, thank you. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, terrific. So just a little bit of background here, um, a couple of years ago, um, when the Heritage Association was meeting with the Budget Committee. Um, one of the topics of discussion was the upcoming, um, hundred and fiftieth anniversary, the town's anniversary. Uh, and, uh, in the past, uh, in, in that past, uh, back in the centennial. And, and I think maybe at the, the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary, there were parades, uh, um, to celebrate the, the event. Um, so we, we thought at the time that, uh, we may be able to have a parade, uh, this year during a hundred and fiftieth. And so we, we asked that the, uh, Budget Committee to, um, recommend, uh, uh, ten thousand dollars to help pay for, for, uh, a parade. And if they put it, uh, under a town department like Parks and Recreation, um, uh, who we, we thought at the time. May, may, uh, be involved or, 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 or take charge of the, of the parade. Subsequently, the, uh, the Town Council did, did approve that and, and, and put the, put that budget under Special Events and Parks and Recreation. Unfortunately, uh, that there was little appetite, uh, for a parade this year. And, uh, uh, really no energy in the community to, to help organize one. So, um, so that money is, is still sitting there unspent. One of the things that, uh, um, the Heritage Association committed to doing was to try to write a, uh. Uh, an update history of the town from the, the last history book that was written by Walter Nemec in, in nineteen seventy-five. To try to cover the, the, the last fifty years of the, of the town's history. Again, we hoped to do that on a volunteer basis. Um, but the reality is, uh, we just don't have the, the, the time, uh, and frankly, the talent to, to do that. We, we, um, approached John Hill, who's a re- uh, retired Providence Journal reporter. He covered the, the town for many, many years, um, when he was still on the job, uh, about writing. The, the history book and he, he, um, uh, agreed that to, to do it. Um, the cost is gonna be about four thousand dollars. So, um, we, uh, approached Mr. Penegast and, and asked him if, if he would consider. Um, allowing us to use, uh, four thousand dollars of that special events money. To, to pay Mr. Hill for writing the, the history book. Um, and so, um, we're here tonight to ask you to approve. That fourth, moving that four thousand dollars, uh, uh, or re-appropriating it for, for the history book.
Money's already, uh, the money's already in an account somewhere.
The, uh, the initial ten thousand, right, you're just a lot wrong, that is pretty, it's in the reserve account. So we're gonna use four thousand of your commission, uh, to do the book instead of the ten thousand. Before we reclassify, reclassify under the reserve, but why, I'm sure they're not being, we've already spoken about that, so. That's where it's, it's not coming out of the present, uh, operating part, reserve.
It was put in, it was put in two years ago, I believe, I think so.
Yeah.
And then they didn't have the funds, so they're asking, they're asking us, just like we did on some of the other ones that we did. When you take four thousand, what if you just tell it, it's not for, um, special events, it's gonna be for history. Okay, so it's, instead of being ten for the special events, it'll be six for the history.
Anybody have any more questions, Mr. King?
Thank you for all your endeavors and Mr. Penegast, thank you for working with all the other departments and.
It's very important, man, that his hands and everything is involved with everything. Okay, do we have a motion, uh, to, uh, reclassify them, uh, from the reserve, four thousand dollars from the reserves? Any further discussions or questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Al? Yes, Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Badne?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes. Thanks, Mr. King.
Thank, thank you all very much.
Discussion my council, what are the action on National Grid pole location in Taita Drive?
Okay, um, this is more or less a, a formality to come for you for the, uh, installation of a telephone pole for a resident. Just want to give a quick, a little brief background on this. This, uh, is a, a new house at the end of the year, a couple, uh, had tried to move into this house. Um, since December. And for whatever reasons, the request never made it to my office, they went to these province. Uh, so this couple was pretty diligent, tracking stuff down and working, uh, with myself. And we were able to, I, I put this request, I approved this request and passed it to be submitted to you tonight for approval. Uh, but I also contacted somebody at Grid on behalf of this, uh, this couple. Uh, I, I'd like to say that as of today, pole was put in last week and power was brought to the house today. Is this a little buzzed? It is, yeah. Uh, so, it, I've, I've done these requests before, it's almost like a formality. Once I approve this location, you guys approve it, uh, for Grid to move forward. It's already moved forward, uh, testing people, I've just had a standstill, so.
Yeah, you know, she's, she's a, she's a bulldozer, she's a bulldozer.
Uh, but it, it just, they, they, but it's just, it's, it's actually a sad, uh, event. But it's been corrected and they're very pleased. So that's the background on it. So I'm looking for approval to, uh, put this pole in power of the house. Okay. Ms. Al's.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the work order for National Grid three oh three nine, research pole one to install the pole on Inte Drive.
One second, we have a second. Roll call please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Badne?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes, thank you. Okay, uh, discussion by council, what are the action for tax stabilization of, of Monbridge, uh, MMB X two Realty LLC. TBA B five, by eight, by three hundred. This is, we have to, we have to continue the public hearing, we already have. Okay, that's right, that's right. Okay, so is there a motion to open the public hearing? So moved, we have a second please.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badne?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes. Okay, is there anybody, uh, out there, uh, in the audience that would like to be heard on this, uh, public hearing for the B five? Do we see any hints? Yeah, last again, is there anybody out there that would like to be heard on this public hearing regarding, uh, B five? Okay, I'll stand more than close to public here. We have a second, roll call please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Badne?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes. So, uh, you have the, uh, Mr. Branch, uh, there was a little. A little difficulty getting his color, uh, confusion with the COVID, COVID and everything like that, but, uh, you know, we, we made the effort, he made the effort. And we finally had this before us, we, uh, approving him for the tax stabilization that we have before us. He's going with the ten year.
Um, well, hello. Hi, I'm Jennifer St. George, the tax assessor.
Oh, hi.
Hi, um, so there's two proposals, there's a five year and a ten year. Um, I'm suggesting the five year, um. But obviously it is up to the town council.
So why are you suggesting five year?
Um. I believe it would be better for the town and for Mr. Blanchard. Um, so if you look at it, the five year, there'd be either one, the five or ten year. There will be no increase the first year. And then from there on, for the five year, it'll be two hundred and sixty thousand in assessment. You can't really, I can't really give you a set tax rate, uh, taxes because the tax rate changes each year.
Right, but I don't, uh, just, if you could just clarify, why do you, why do you support the five year over the ten year?
Um. I, again, I just believe, I just feel that it would be beneficial for the town. And it, it'll give Mr. Blanchard a better. Like easing into that one point eight million. But we could do the ten year, the ten year is the same thing, um, just no increase, obviously, the first year. And then each year after that, it would increase by a hundred and thirty thousand in assessment each year. But the land, just so everyone knows, land will change pending, depending on, uh, revow. So the land's not really included in this. It is, but it isn't, it's pending, on pending a revow.
This only, this only includes the additional value that he's putting into the property to make renovations and improvements to it. The land, the land is not part of this, right? So he's only exempt what he's, what he's doing in approximately one point three billion dollars that he's. Doing improvements to that site. Um, my, my question is, does he have, does the applicant have a choice whether he wants?
No, it's entirely the council. So, if, if I may, uh, continue. But it basically comes down to, this is a ten year, um, Mr. Branch, uh, very slowly mentally ramp, uh, ramps up. Paying the tax, the town is not making as much revenue, uh, in, in the end. But there's a council, you have to decide to, it's a hackable deal for Mr. Branch, whether it's five or ten years. So, uh, for five years, Mr. Branch would stop and pay, uh, doing businesses at the B five, start to pay back taxes quicker. So the, uh, stabilization ends quicker. Uh, if you want, if, if you want to make it ten years, it just goes, you know, actually, I'll go a little bit, just goes a little bit longer. So that, that'll be a council decision, but, um, we would need no time, of course, when we start forecasting for budgets in the future. And so Mr. Branch, I can start forecasting this, uh, this budget as well.
Business model too.
Yes.
No, the, the only reason I'm asking, I, I understand that, I just didn't know if it was his option, whether we wanted ten years or less. Or was our option to advance that, that it's, it's the council's prerogative to, to decide. The, the reality is, yeah, we, we'll, he'll get to a hundred percent taxable in, in a five year span as opposed to a ten year span. I understand that part of it. The whole point of this ordinance, you were there when, when you passed it was. I know, he, he could not even move to the town and we would have zero coming in. So ramping it up to a level, that was the whole point of the incentive, that we ramp them up to that point so they wouldn't be lacking one shot. Ramp their way up, that would probably be most economically relevant, so it's working.
To encourage and facilitate, and that's what it's all about. Um, so there is a line in there that says not to exceed ten years. Uh, I, I, I'm comfortable with either, uh, Mr. Branch, I was not here. Uh, this is something we could tighten up for the next applicant and if we are, I'm tired of that, the council, there'd be a five day stabilization. And I, I, I think at this point, i- if you mind me suggesting make it ten years, sorry, Jennifer. Uh, maybe ten years so that, uh, we get up and running and build the bus. Not every application's the same, everyone's individual. Uh, but I, I think that especially now, being the one with COVID setbacks, Mr. Branch has invested a lot of money now. This, this revenue stream, I, I don't know to this, but one can assume it has not been as strong as it has been in the past. So if, if you don't mind me suggesting a ten year, just so he can recover and just keep hiring and keep people on payroll.
I tend to agree. Uh, Mr. Branch, I could very easily have, uh, he has a, a very successful business right over the line, Blasky Boulevard. He could very easily have just walked away and, and easily keep managing one restaurant and stayed, decided to reinvest into the town. And make a go of it with another location, uh, I would like to, um, and they've been around, I mean, they've been here since I was, since I was, you know, very young.
It's a destination, he finds a destination and now to, to take a look at his business plan where, uh. They are looking to expand it to ice cream and coffee shop, it, it's going to be a destination. So by the way, meal taxes keep coming into North Smithfield too.
Right.
One percent.
Yeah, so I, I would like to, uh, show our support for the, for him and, and the organization. Uh, like you said, what they went through to COVID, it must have been brutal. Uh, and I would like to offer him the ten year.
We'll put that into more.
Well, I appreciate that.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I make a motion that we, we approve a tax stabilization agreement with MMB X two Realty LLC. Doing business as the B five and by eight lot three hundred for a ten year. Ramble.
That's a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? Roll call please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Badne?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes. Yes. Discussion by council, what other action on water bid to Rhode Island Truck Center? BPW six wheel dump truck with plow. Mr. Penney guys? Good evening again. Um. Little explanation on this uh request for approval. Uh, there were three seal bids that were opened up on July twenty seventh for a six wheel dump truck and plow. The low bid was a hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and eleven twenty-eight cents. The highest bid is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, a hundred and one sixty-eight. The difference of those two, I just want to note it is thirty-nine hundred dollars. One of the most important issues that I'm dealing with right now with new vehicles, which we just spoke about with police cars, is delivery dates. The low bidder and I've confirmed this with eighteen northern uh war international trucks, there's eighteen months to two years with delivery. Totally unacceptable in my eyes. I, I'm already down two trucks, right? I, I, I've just been setback. I then contacted um Freightliner, you know, Truck Center in Riverside, and they have guaranteed one year from the day of approval tonight. So it comes down to slots, billing, it's a very complicated situ- situation, but uh, I feel for the difference of thirty-nine hundred dollars, I'm not gonna go, I'm not recommending the low bidder, I'm recommending the high bidder, Rhode Island Truck Center for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, a hundred and sixty dollars. And it comes down to the delivery date. That's, that's my bottom line. For the sake of, like I said, one thousand dollars, I'd rather have a truck in a year than two years. Okay, does anybody have any questions, Mr. Penney guys?
Just a further comment if I may, that, that time delay, I'm sure that BPW would put more than thirty-nine hundred dollars into repairing to that, those vehicles that uh that wrecked or trying to replace, so doesn't make a lot of sense.
Okay, um. So is there a motion to approve a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars for Rhode Island Truck Center for the uh?
Mr. President.
Thank you, go ahead.
Make a motion that we approve an award of bid to Rhode Island Truck Center for a six wheel dump truck with plow, in amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion?
I believe capital we put in on the B five.
Correct. Roll call please.
Miss Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Badne?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes. Discussion by council, what other action on request for PA Corporation Engineering Contract Extension for Townwide Road, roadway improvements twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Mr. Penney guys? Yes, this is uh requesting uh continuation of the uh initial contract which started in two thousand and fifteen for PA Corporation to continue uh the uh engineering and insulting for our townwide road, roadway improvements to twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, once, um, hopefully this is approved, then we can move forward uh with road reconstruction, paving the town uh which is somewhere in the area of a million uh plus dollars. And uh, they're gonna come up with that list and we're gonna be able to, uh, they're gonna come up with a list of the roads that uh this, this suggestion we ought to wish to have paid. What we do is, we give them a list of roads that we monitor based off an old uh report, two thousand and fourteen fifty, like Solly Engineering Group. Uh, and I, I know as we all know, roads deteriorate yearly. Uh, so that report is a good guide. Uh, but I go by my, my people who go out there and survey these roads. I, I can tell you right now, there's, there's a road that's in dire need of repair. Right now, I'm getting emails daily. A section of the Sock Hill Road, uh by Redwood and Old Ridge down to the power lines, that road is, we're losing that road. So that, that's probably at the top of us, but what we do is we give them a list of, say, twenty strips, uh all different sizes and shapes. We already have them, and the reason we, we try to stay with PA is we already have them, where we have seventy-five percent group uh sign, we're already, already done. So they're not recreating the wheel, or another company's not recreating, creating that wheel. Uh, and some of the roads that are on our list are part of the seventy-five percent design. They put a number on those roads. We know the money, the amount of money we have, we go out to bid, let's say, five primary roads that we want taken care of, and everything else is an add alternate after that, you can fill in. Uh, so at the end of the day, if we've done, say, ten roads, um, and we have sixty thousand dollars left over, I can do a short street, I can do a cul-de-sac, that's for me. So it gives us the options to move around, of course. They don't really tell us what roads we should do, they suggest the pricing of whether it's a total reclamation, or if it's milling, or to which only, it's, it's all over the place. But that's what we're paying them to tell us how we should approach this job.
They do the engineering.
They do all the engineering work on it.
Then they will receive the construction ones that's going on across state and place, they'll do inspection.
And then ask about the bid. You know, and then we put, list those streets, we'll all the add alternates, we'll go out to bid, we get those firm numbers in, and we come to you.
They might be, you know.
And then we'll suggest that and we'll give your approval at that point forward. Okay. Mr. President, with. Go ahead.
Based on, on the recommendation of the Public Works Director, I make a motion that we renew the contract extension for townwide road improvements for PA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Uh, so there's no number on this, right?
No, it's
actually possible, our numbers, they're part of the state MPA. So once we give them the uh limitations as to what we want done, then they give us their pricing, and then we can evolve that. Okay.
Some of the town.
Correct, that's right. Right, uh, any further questions, uh, Mr. Penney guys? Roll call please.
Miss Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Badne?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes. Thank you, thanks. Discussion by council, what other action on rules regarding Zoom meetings? Uh, I put this on the agenda, as you know, the rules have changed regarding Zoom meetings. Uh, one of the uh most, one of the biggest changes is that uh the members of the boards and the member of the councils have to, have to appear in person for meetings, we can no longer appear in a Zoom, uh, you know, in Zoom meeting ourselves. However, uh, Mr. Gliezi, tell me where, when I'm going wrong. Uh, however, uh, we can still allow comment to come from Zoom as well as people in the audience. So we can allow people to comment on Zoom. The, the, the problem with that comes in to now where we have to deal with public hearings. So if we have a public hearing and we allow comment to come in on Zoom for public hearing, and then all of a sudden, the system goes down, or somebody claims that they can't hear, then now, uh, now we, we have to redo that public hearing all over again. So, uh, as a council, I'd like for us to come up with a, with a agreement, a set of rules that we all agree on, the Zoom. Uh, and I'll make, I'll make a couple of suggestions, whoever wants to make suggestions. And one of the biggest suggestions I'm gonna make is that we allow public comment in person, in on Zoom for open forum. But for a public hearing, you have to attend the meeting, otherwise uh these public hearings could go on forever because people could just find a dating error. And then we have to do it all over again. Uh, Mr. Gliezi, anything you want to add to what I just said?
No, again, just my, the, the, there is a heightened legal aspect to public hearings, as you all know, that they are sometimes required by statute. And if there was a problem with a public hearing, it could make the action invalid. And that's the reason why I think public hearings need to be uh treated very carefully.
And we're free to make our own rules as, as we see fit on this issue, right?
That's correct. The, the only OMA requirement is that uh, unfor- uh, fortunately, unfortunately, all members of boards and commissions must appear and they cannot participate by Zoom for any reason at all. Except if they are in the military or they are disabled under the Federal Disability Act.
Okay, another second that I have too, is that when we do have open forum, that the people in the audience will, will be acknowledged first, we have to come to the meeting, so I would like to acknowledge them first. And then we can move on to the people that have a hand raised on Zoom. But uh, like I said, any, anybody else have any ideas, like, you know, we could come to, you know, come up to.
They'll be a little more generous than I would be. I understand the, the reality of Zoom, that it may be that people will want to watch us. And, and that's how I look at it, that going forward, if you want to address this board, there is a place, come to the arena. We will still provide Zoom so you can watch our meetings, more or less live streaming our meetings. But if you want to participate in our meetings, you need to come here to participate. That's my, that's my thought process on it. Um, I had a discussion with Kyle earlier before the meeting started, that this room was, when we designed this room, we had the guys committed to do all the sound assistance. Zoom wasn't even in the game. It wasn't even in the game.
Right.
Um, we've all witnessed the issues that we have trying to Zoom this meeting. While we're here and people are at home, we run into complex issues. Because we're trying to interact virtually with them. And, and we hit issues where we can't hear, they can't hear, there's an echo, there's a breakup, we miss pieces here and there. Um, so if, if we're gonna be here meeting in person and you want to conduct business with this board, you come here to conduct the business. You can, we can still Zoom and, and Kyle can stream it and people can watch it. But if you want to participate, you need to be here. It's not even the open forum. You come here if you want to be present.
Uh, I think, I, I get it, I get it, and like I said, we're just a lot of ideas and uh, so we're just having an, an open discussion here, but uh I want people to be able to feel, to feel that if they wanted to say something today, that, you know, that they, we make it as easy as possible because we'll say what they gotta say. And um, then they can't complain that, that they didn't have an opportunity to speak. That's just me though, I mean, I'll go along with, you know, whatever the majority wants on this one.
I agree with the opinion on that too.
Okay. Do you have any, any thoughts?
I agree they should be here in person, so there is no risk communication.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right, I think, uh, I think sometimes with Zoom, things can get misconstrued, uh, not, not uh taken as they should, um, you know, quite honestly, I mean, it's been like this for for decades, you know, and really, I think, obviously, having them have the convenience of having them watching, uh, I think it's great, uh, as opposed to watching it, um, you know, on YouTube or whatever, after the fact. I think from a convenience standpoint, it's great that you still present it live. Uh, but I agree, I think that if, if they're gonna feel passionate about something that they need to bring to town council, uh, then they have to be just as passionate to show up live, okay?
All right, so uh, one rule will be then that uh comments cannot be made over Zoom, they have to be made live. If there'd be a tendency, tendency. Uh, uh, Mr. Gliezi, does this um pertain, the, the rules that we're gonna make tonight, are they gonna pertain to everybody across the board, with all the board committees in the town?
Well, that, that, that's why I actually was raising my hand, Mr. President, I think I, I think you need, as a council, to make a couple of decisions. One, you need to decide whether or not you're going to livestream the council meeting and or board meetings. So yes, well, your rules, you decide the rules for, to answer your question directly, you, the council mu- should decide the rules for all boards and commissions across the board. That's number one, but when you do decide, you should take it in pieces. Do you want what boards and commissions do you want to have live streaming, right? Using Zoom or otherwise, live streaming, which means people can just watch in real time. Then the next question is, do you want people to participate um by giving comment in open forum, that should be another vote, and then or, or, or you could make one vote that just answered it all, but I just want to make sure you make it clear for everybody how you want to proceed.
Well, well, the way I was saying, and tell me if I'm wrong, uh, is we would come up with the rules uh right now and, and we would have joined Mr. Rules, and then next week, we would have, be on the agenda for the council to vote and approve everything, once, we could actually do that tonight, right? Yeah, so uh yeah, so what do you think, uh? Mr. Mr. Zoski, you have an opinion on this?
I do, Mr. President, thank you. Um. We, we do have many boards, commissions, uh, some folks are skilled to run Zoom meetings, and then they have to monitor who's in there, they have to recognize them. There, there may be questions of uh overtalk coming from the audience. I think that if you look at a, a, a quasi judicial decision-making boards, like the planning board and zoning board, I, I, I hopefully suggest how council consider those boards as being um on Zoom meetings. Board members in attendance, uh, expert witnesses in attendance, applicants in attendance, uh, public in attendance, but also Zoom it for the uh people that would like to see what's going on. And, and one of the questions you may have to answer is that if they're on Zoom meeting, do they have to continually participate in these type of meetings? And I would say, no, because this building is fully handicapped accessible. Uh, so folks can come in. So, but I, I, I would just say that planning board and zoning board be the, if we're going to have Zoom meetings, those would be the two that I think would take precedent for Zoom meetings.
You know, that, that, we have to listen to David, that's what I'm gonna say, that David was saying that you're gonna decide all boards and commissions? I look at it that like, you're, you're senior, and they're not even doing it to start it now. But, but some of these, these committees, they don't need to Zoom their meetings, people will go to them, they, you know. But yes, I agree with you that this board, the zoning board, planning board, if we're gonna do Zoom, then you can watch them, so you, you, you know, people can see what's going on. The reality is that if I hold both boards, even this board, look at, look at the screen, they're not knocking down and going to watch. That's true. And, and so, but we'll give them the opportunity. We won't take that away because we have the ability to Zoom, it doesn't, it doesn't really, we'll pay for it, and it's, it's a minimal cost. Um, and I would agree with you that, yes, so people can watch and see what's going on. And maybe, and I will get them in the chair, because they'll say, I didn't like what went on, I'm going to the meeting, because they couldn't say anything. Um, but, but the, 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 there's not a ton of people there. I know the other night that the zoning board here, there was a lot of people there because it was an issue that affected the neighborhoods and they couldn't come to meetings, because they have to come to the meeting, because zoning board is, but this is really a public hearing, the whole thing is maybe whatever you wrote in speech, it's testimony, it's, you know. So it's, it's live and it's not public comment, that's that's just how I feel. Those three, us and those two boards, if you want to continue to Zoom, I mean, that, it's not, it's not public participation, it's, it's public view.
Yeah, everybody agree that those two boards? There's another one. Uh, anybody else have any other suggestions, uh, or any of the rules that are gonna come to the uh Zoom? Stepping on China territory.
People come to the meetings, it's not like the old days, it's like phone work, sound system, it's way better than, yeah. Way better, way better than when we were in the middle of school, it's, it's way better. So there's no reason not to come, people can hear everything. And the people, as long as we're not interacting with those people, I think you're gonna hear this better too. Um, it's when we're interacting with them, having the, the line open, as opposed to just watching, listening to it, it, it's gonna work better.
Uh, I would, I would suggest, and uh, Mr. Gliezi, tell me if we can do this, that we announce, and with all these boards and commissions and the Zoom meetings, how would you, how would you word it that uh if the system goes down, we can still have our meeting, that it's not required that it goes on Zoom, it's just something that we're gonna try to, a function of, we're gonna try to live. So if the system shuts down for some reason, uh, and, and, or we can't get it going, then we can just still start a meeting and, and move on.
Well, if, if, if you're only providing Zoom as a courtesy, live streaming. Well, if, if, if you're only providing Zoom as a courtesy, live streaming, absent technical problems, live streaming, you could indicate that, you know, you'll provide live streaming of, of, of the council meeting. Technology, you know, prevailing, if we have a problem with technology, then your, your meeting will not, a, a, a live streaming, your Zoom meeting for a, as a courtesy to the constituency. Would not turn into a legal requirement that would prevent the meeting from going forward. As long as you're careful in the way you, you're indicating. If you're going to allow the public to participate in the meeting through Zoom, then the Zoom, once you make that rule, then Zoom becomes a legal requirement, and the public would, they can't participate, you'd have to stop the meeting.
Does anybody come up with that?
David, can you see the agenda for tonight that, that we have? At the top of it, where it says, in, with the asterisks, it says partition, participation may also be via Zoom as indicated below, and as of.
Right.
So if we eliminate that sentence, that participation is no longer allowed, you can still have the Zoom contact, but you can't participate through Zoom.
Right.
Remove that, that sentence from the top, that we should be covered?
Yes, you could eliminate, I mean, that's, that's, that's one thing you could do, I, I guess you would also, my only concern is, yes, the answer to your question is yes, eliminate that sentence, that there will be. But I think you'd be more clear on that, you'd say that the, the meeting will be livestreamed via Zoom, but participation will not be allowed, public participation will not be allowed by Zoom. And will only be allowed by attending in person. I think you would be very adamant and clear in, in your, in your notice. Public participation requires in-person attendance. And, and I, I just want to say this, although I've said the council should, you know, make the rules for. I, I should also say, you could also, up, it's up to the council, you could defer that issue to the other boards, if you wanted to. It's, it's your choice.
For what issue?
I mean, I, I, the council can decide to make the rule for all boards and commissions for the town, or the council can say, we're only going to make the decision for our board, and we're going to let the other boards make their own decision.
No, I'd like to, I think that we should, yeah, I think we can, yeah, we should set the rules and let them just stick to that, you know.
Okay, I just wanted you to know that you have that option.
Yeah, well, the, the school committee separate from us, or they're?
Yeah, school committee sets, sets their own requirements.
Anybody else have any suggestions?
Just a, an easy disclaimer, shouldn't be technical difficulty, it will not affect the hearing, the review on the outcome of the hearing, something to that effect, because if it goes down. Something, something simple.
We want to continue, we, it's just.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, we have, you got that, what David said, all right, on that?
Well, she wants to play a factor, that's a wonderful thing.
We could also say. We could always say it's just for convenience purposes only.
Yeah.
You know, and that kind of, something.
Counsel, just a little bit more, like saying the technical difficulty, something to establish that the meeting doesn't stop. This is a perfect example, we all laugh about, David, were you aware in the audio you broke up, we couldn't hear you?
No, I, I wasn't.
So it was a perfect example, so, but some, a quick disclaimer saying that it would not impact or necessitate having a meeting again. Put some disclaimer in it, or have to leave some other videos on. Well, right on, right on, right on the agenda, a couple lines, a couple. Back in the day, they used to have the beam, when they were starting, when they started videotaping the beams at one time, they had to, we did this thing that, that the tape wasn't, we could, we could not, it was being recorded.
So, what do we have to, what do we have?
I have on the lives, livestream Zoom only, no comments, we'd like it for the town council, zoning, planning board.
And the other boards and committees are required, or will not, never mind, are required, will not participate.
Right. Zoom livestreaming is only as a courtesy, public participation requires in-person attendance, and then to work on some type of disclaimer, if the Zoom does go down. They will not involve in that, it needs to be regained.
How's that?
Mr. President, I would just, I would just add, I would just add a clarification on, on the Zoom if I could.
Go ahead.
When you say livestreaming is offered, is offered as a courtesy, will be provided the courtesy. Also provided that technology allows, you know, tech, you want to say something to the effect that technic, technology difficulties, or, or disruption of the, of the stream by technology difficulties. Will not, the meeting will not be, we, we want to be clear, the meeting will proceed regardless of technical difficulties.
How can they?
We want to say something about that, because I don't want to have someone challenging the concept that we're offering it and we couldn't deliver it.
Yeah, so something like, like Ms. Al was just saying, technical difficulties will not affect the start time or the, or the outcome of the meeting.
Will not prevent the meeting.
You get the general idea, so, David, could, could Joey just run these by you, and you kind of help clean up the wording on those?
Yes.
And approve it, and that's.
Three lights, with the three lights.
Yeah. Yeah, and this will also, this will apply to the planning board and the zoning board.
And, and did I understand you, the no other boards will, no other boards will be livestreamed?
Correct.
Or committees?
Correct.
So I think you should make that clear as well.
You broke up, David, we couldn't hear you.
I, I think you should also make clear that livestreaming will not be provided for any other boards or commissions. For instance, if somebody wants to go watch the Hollywell Committee, there'll be no livestreaming, is what I'm understanding. Or, or the, or the other committee, the, the Municipal Building Review Task Force, they will not have livestreaming, is that correct?
That's correct. And, and the benefit of this is now the Hollywood Review Committee can meet at Hollywood, if they wanted, without worrying about having to pay the cameras around, you know. The building review committee here can be.
Essentially, we can meet there outside.
Yeah, it would be outside.
It would be outside.
In the front. You see them?
Yes.
Okay, does anybody else have any suggestions? All right, so we will take action on this, we'll have David clean them up, and then we'll, votes will prove them on the, the next meeting. Thank you. Discussion by council on what other action on tax penalty adjustments.
Mr. President, if I may, first of all, since you know, uh, finance records are a little handy for reading the timeouts, it's pressing issue to. I'm going to carry it forward, just bear in mind all that there may be additional.
I don't know, until next weekend. That's everything, right? I will then take a motion for adjournment.
Good night. Have a good night, everyone.